For September first. This time is seven. Six. All three selectmen are present, town administrator and president. According for the citizens of Dunbar and Mr. Robert Martel, thank you, Robert. Okay. We get some minutes to approve, but I'd like to talk about the special personnel workshop minutes. There's a few items were discovered to be inaccurate or missing. So I'd like to defer those if we have consensus to next meeting, we can revisit those.
Yep.
In agreement.
Okay, very good. And then we'll go for the minutes for, we have other minutes, and we have board minutes and we have special meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the seven P M. regular minutes of August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two as amended.
I'm staying because I was on the phone.
Okay, I'll second that. I have no issues with any discussion on that at all, gentlemen?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then we have another administration question.
I make a motion to approve the eight oh two P M. non-public minutes of August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two as amended.
I'll second that, and those, just for the record, those are not sealed. Any discussion, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm staying.
Correct. And just the minutes we're deferring with this special personal workshop, just for the public's interest in that. We looked at, essentially, we looked at fees across the town, and we came up with consensus. We voted on new fees for the town to go in effect from the first, minimal increases, but the minutes just need to be updated and tightened up. All right, and we'll open it for public comment. Bob, you're here, anything for the public?
Nothing.
Okay, I want to close public comment, bring it back to the board, and I have an M S four thirty-four here.
Mike, did we do the three selectmen present thing?
Yes.
Okay, and you stated Bob was videotaped?
Yes.
All right, so stop reading while you do that stuff.
All right. That's what happens when he hit birthdays accumulated.
That's right.
Okay, lean, if you want to talk about the four thirty-four?
Okay, so I provided the board with a copy of the M S four thirty-four. It's actually due on around September first. They like to try to keep all these forms on designated time schedule. I did review it, and I actually had a snagged Dave because he happened to stop into the office to go over the estimated revenues that we as a board had presented to the voters and used for our warrant articles. And Dave had a couple of questions. One was, do we need to report the ARPA funds on the M S thirty-four? And if you look on page two, about halfway down, number three, three, seven, nine, it's listed there, two ninety-four, four oh one, because this four thirty-four includes any revenues from other sources that we would use to. So I did get that clarified, so there was nothing to change there. And then the other item that Dave had questioned, and I did check with my advisor, and she mentioned that it was related to the one-time highway funding that we just received.
Received for Jeff.
Yep, she said that we were correct and that we do not report that in here because it is a one-time municipal aid, and it's earmarked specifically for highway projects, and it does not get commingled with the revenues from the town's operating budget. So as it stands, I will release this tomorrow morning to the D R A. So that she'll have one more document in place to set the tax rate because there are still a few that are outstanding for them, but there will not be any changes.
Do you check with the municipal association on that lien?
I, with the D R A.
The D R A.
Yep, my advisor, Michelle Clark, she works with me on that.
Okay.
It just seems, it just seems odd that if you don't put it on this form, it's hard to track. Is it on any other form for our town?
For the, which one now?
That, that one fee for Jeff.
Oh, well, actually, I haven't had a public hearing yet on that.
Okay.
So we will be, we just got the money. I was hoping to hear about the other funding that we're going to get so we can do it together because there is a fee to post it and accept it and.
So maybe we'll get another thirty-eight thousand or whatever.
Yeah.
And as a consensus, we were just talking, some of the extra money for the funding, we're going to use it to, Jeff may be incurring some additional bills coming because he's got planning board issues, and the town's portion is going to have to be paid for out of his budget, i.e. taxes.
It'd be a nice way not to increase his budget next year and use that funding for that.
Yeah.
It has to be for rolling progress.
Exactly, that's what it'd be for.
Yeah, I'm in full agreement.
Yeah, so we're going to keep my powder dry until we get some bills and get that. And as we get into budget season, we'll probably have more clarity on that.
Yeah, because he'll have the exact amounts from the planning board as well that he has to come up with.
Right, and that would, he would have pulled out of taxpayers' pockets.
We can offset that, that'd be a huge gain for us.
Okay, very good. Any other questions on the four thirty-four? Well, I just want one more quick glance at that lien, no other surprises here, though.
No, no, it's pretty standard.
Because it went up on, I see it went.
The only, the one thing that I did notice, and I just received this week as an electronic deposit, is the flood control reimbursement we have budgeted there on page two, about halfway down.
Yep.
Seventy thousand is the number we use every year. And last year, we got sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine, something like that. And I just got that yesterday, and that is actually going to be sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and something. So when it comes to the state federal, like last year, we got three hundred thousand in rooms and meals.
Right.
The D R A has the authority to make the change to our thirty, four thirty-four. And they will use it for.
As a starting point.
The tax rate setting. So in this case here, I did not change it, which is not critical, it's less than two thousand dollars.
Right.
But she on her end, she and I will discuss it, and we will make change together so that it reflects the sixty-eight thousand.
But the meals and rooms is not in yet?
Nothing, we won't get that till December unless she knows it when we're setting the tax rate, and she should. She has to have that number.
So potentially, if we had a good year, it could go down.
Well, the revenue received could go up.
Revenue received would go up, tax rate go down?
Correct.
That's, okay.
Yep.
The rooms and meals and highway block grant of ninety?
Correct, and I just got the third quarter. We still have one more payment in by the end of the year for that, and they're coming in on mark, right on track for that.
Okay.
Who has to sign this, Mike?
I do.
You do?
I just wanted to share it with you.
Okay, thank you.
Because it says here the prepared certifies, and that would be me.
All right.
And I will sign it and upload it.
All right, next item.
And we got the highway maintenance doing, I can take a minute and go reprint the names on that for you unless you want to just scratch it.
I can scratch it, that's the one Justin corrected.
Updated contractor winter maintenance.
I was just saying, across mine, I'll put you to change yours, chair.
I think we can do the pen and ink, I'm happy with that, gentlemen.
Yeah, it's actually for bookkeeping and references. I'll scan the signed documents so that I have one that the selectmen have looked at, and it's not changed or modified in any way.
Okay, what we have we're going to vote on, gentlemen, is a highway contract, winter maintenance on-call stipend. We agreed to a six-wheeled plow sander would be paid a hundred dollars, and the one hundred, the one ton should be paid sixty dollars, sixty-five dollars. I need to ask you, why is it per hour here? I thought that was the.
They bill us per hour, so there's two things going on there.
Right.
If there is no snow, the on-call maintenance guarantees them a five-hour minimum.
Got you, I'm sorry.
If they do have to go out and clear roads, then that's the fee that they will charge us per hour.
Okay. I have no issues with that, that's exactly how we discussed it at the workshop.
It's actually with Jeff when he was here.
Oh, with Jeff, yeah.
A couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, a lot of selectmen, really.
That's right.
Yeah, it's basically per hour basis, minimum of five hours.
When there's no snow, correct.
Yeah, for the period of ten weeks.
Right. Justin, you need to sign that, pass up the lien, please. Okay, it was a, during the construction of the renovation of the town hall slash library building, there was a, Jeff Trexler required them to put some supports in during the building process, requiring them tear down a wall, remove some existing insulation. And so Mr. Chacon, his company's asking for some, a small amount, a few dollars as a change order to basically pay for the installation, the existing installation he removed. I have no issues with that, and score exactly five hundred and sixty dollars.
Yep, and a little clarification on it, it's the wall between the existing building and the addition. When the architect had bid the job out, they weren't going to re-insulate that wall because there was some blown-in insulation in there. That all had to come out for them to put the structural reinforcements in that Jeff Trexler had later designed in the building. So now they're just re-insulating that wall between the two.
I have, I have, we have consensus?
That's a pretty small.
Right. So all in favor, all in favor of making this change, accepting this change order?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, pass up the lien, that can be authorized for payment.
All right.
And that goes with it. Okay. We had a, lean was busy this week. We had the Department of Labor Inspection of Municipal Buildings came in. And lean gave me a quick, there were a lot of little things found, but kudos to lean for just spending the extra time with them and walk around it. And I just want to give kudos to the transfer station manager. Lean basically identified the workshop, the workplace down there, and they identified it as shortcomings, but overall outstanding, and they wanted to use that as an example as to other towns of how to do it right. So kudos to Woody, and that, lean recognizes Woody for making it happen. So thank you for recognizing him.
Yep.
And so Woody's not here tonight, but I think he gets some kudos on that.
Yeah, he will be here, I just said he'll be.
Yeah, so let's mention that to him. There's a couple of things on here that need to be addressed. I think some of, a lot of them are small, as Dave pointed out to me earlier. I'd like to send a copy to the committee.
The committee, joint loss.
Joint loss committee.
Joint loss committee.
We have a meeting coming up on twenty-first, so we'll go over some of these items.
I would ask them to prioritize them as a recommendation to us. And then with year-end money, we'll have some year-end maintenance money. If there's anything left over this, not left over, but remaining this year, we can execute towards fixing some of these shortcomings.
Yeah, and some of them don't have a lot of dollar value towards.
No, some of these are pretty minimal items, I think, but.
But like, you have, like laded sign, I mean, they have to buy an L E D sign.
Some of it was housekeeping, like securing ladders. Some departments had them secured, but then they saw roof shovels, snow shovels that weren't secured. So it was just getting the bungee cord to install and secure those so that they don't fall down.
So Justin, with prioritizing them, maybe they could also get some dollar figures for some of them that need bids, like say the exit lighting and whatnot.
Yeah, maybe we can bundle that with some of that, so maybe they can do all, all the buildings.
Yeah.
And try and bundle them all together so that we can get it.
If we get a dollar figure towards the end of the year, we'll know what we're looking at.
Right, I would maybe distribute, discuss it, and then have them come back to the meeting with some recommendations. Because that's the way they can just digest it.
And I may have to deal with a couple of them, or some that can access, like the exit signs. If we have some at every building, we'll have to bring one electrician around to every building so he can access it.
Got the keys.
Yeah, which is what I did with.
See him having on our side.
I've got all my keys and pass codes.
And I just thought, the Department of Labor liked the fact that we had a joint loss committee in place. We had selectmen representative, the town administrator, several department heads, we had the police and the fire department. I mean, we had a lot of good people at those joint loss meetings, and this is a perfect thing to go back, and they can bundle it up, come back to the selectman with their pricing and recommendations, and we can fund it. And I think it, I'll give them something to do instead of going around and looking at one screw loose or whatever else too, you know? Be a good agenda for them.
So the fact that I've gotten such short notice, it fell on me because they required a town official to be present to do this walkthrough, and I did learn quite a lot. I was very impressed with their thoroughness, and they, as they reiterated, they weren't there to condemn us. They just wanted to find, advise us and ask, you know, make recommendations for positive, good changes that would ensure safety for the employees. So even when they first got here, they spent a good half hour reading all of our minutes. They're impressed with the fact that we still maintain our joint loss meetings quarterly, and the fact that our minutes documented the improvements and changes that we were making and updating from meeting to meeting. So they, you know, commended us for that. A lot of towns didn't know or understand that they were supposed to have a joint loss committee.
Or they put it off.
Yeah, yeah, or it gets forgotten.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we got a lot of good response overall from them.
Thank you, thank you, lean, we're heading out.
I was expecting a report from him, but.
Okay, well, you have more than a report, you basically have.
I typed everything he needed us to look at.
Yeah, that's great.
You know, speaking about that, I think our joint loss has been evolving as well because sometimes when I first got out of those many meetings, we didn't do anything. We talked about a lot of stuff and never, never did it. Now we're starting to act on these things, so I think it's a, it's come a long way, I think.
Okay, we have, we're going to keep moving on. We have a request for education reimbursement from Chief Herman R. He's asking for, he took some courses, each course, he just wants some reimbursement for the courses. He's planning to take three courses in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Just for Brian Tyler, that and all?
No, this is new.
This is for the chief himself.
When'd you guys get that one?
Just yesterday or today, actually today, I think. But that's for next year's budget, that's a request asking the board to accept.
You know, it's part of our town policy, I have no issue with that at all.
No.
And it says fall in line.
And his is up to two thousand a year or something in his contract, so it all falls within his contract, so.
What is it, is it criminal, something criminal justice?
It's all sorts of strategic human resources, human resource policy, employment law, cross-cultural management, it's.
But it's.
It's part of his job.
Yeah, and expanding his knowledge.
It's all the stuff that's next to him.
What's next? No, but as we reminded, there's a commitment to that when he takes the money, correct?
Yeah.
Two-year commitment.
Exactly. The thing is, on top of that, he's got a contract anyways.
Right.
Okay, that's a, we get consensus there, lean, this is no, no vote needed.
That goes in the budget.
Yep. All right, mailbox items.
I think I numbered a few.
Correct, it's interesting. I called chief this week, I just talked to a few issues, and one of them was, you know, the twenty twenty-two, the four, the four that we have? They essentially canceled his order, and they said, have a nice day. And they're doing it to all police departments because they can't come up with chips for the vehicle. They said, we can take an order for twenty twenty-three, but not at the same price.
Right.
So.
I also talked to him about the same issue. He called up in reference to that one not being available, and the fact that they were going to start calling around to see if they found anything else. And lo and behold, it looks like they did find a vehicle available.
Yeah.
Okay, is it a Taurus?
It's the newest.
The same exact vehicle.
So there were three emails from him, the very top one is the newest.
Okay.
But I'll give you guys a breakdown of the emails. They, they were dealing with a company that they thought was our state bid company. The one that told them they couldn't provide the vehicle and dropped their order was not actually the state bid winner this year. So they then called the state bid winner, and they have no vehicles available, and it was like four thousand dollars more for the same vehicle in twenty twenty-three. They called around to other vehicle companies, and they found a company in Massachusetts that buys overstocked police vehicles. The original, that vehicle on site that they can purchase right now was within five hundred dollars of our vehicle that we were going to order, so it was kind of a no-brainer. He since then read the contract, and even though the vehicle base price is only five hundred dollars difference, there was a thousand-dollar caveat that they have to pay to get the vehicle off the lot. So it's still short money, and overall, in his warrant article, they had a warrant article, I think, for forty-six or forty-seven thousand dollars for the complete vehicle with all the hardware.
Actually, it's fifty-seven.
Fifty-six.
Yeah.
And he's got enough money in his budget to cover the excess bit of money that he's going to use. And he's going to be able to get the vehicle this year. And the fact that he went out, he wanted the selectman to approve it only because it wasn't with the company that we originally talked about. But I said, you actually did your due diligence, you got pricing from three different companies, and we not only have a vehicle in the year you wanted, but it's virtually the same pricing other than that caveat of taking it off the lot, so I think he's done his due diligence.
I, we have consensus on that.
Yeah, I have no problems with it.
And he's got the money.
I think he's done his research and.
Yeah.
Do you want me to make a motion to that?
I don't think we have a motion, I think it's consensus because the money's been approved by the voters.
Yep.
Can you email him tomorrow morning? I told him we'd get back to him.
Executed as soon as possible so it doesn't go lost.
That's how we want it to get, get right on.
Right.
I think he was going to get back to him tomorrow morning.
I'll send him tonight for me.
We also have, we have written notice, he's seen written notice from Officer Ralph McCollum, that's what I called him about. Officer McCollum has submitted his retirement papers, he's leaving the law enforcement field completely, and so we have a vacancy there.
And so they've already got an application out for.
Correct, and that's what I, that's what I called him originally, and I found that about, but that's interesting. But he's going into a non-law enforcement field, good luck to him. But it took him, he didn't think it was, he thought it was coming, but it came too soon. So he's working, working on that right now. Next item. We also have, as you know, the building inspector last week, it was the last Thursday, was his last day. For Mike, he departed. Obviously, he needed to get a full-time job with more benefits, so he left on a high note, which is good. But we're advertising, I have Donna White in the lead as far as, I think a selectman should be there, should be Justin, maybe?
Yeah, I've been there, we had two interviews this week, nothing really came about, we didn't. We had one candidate we didn't feel was qualified for the position, another one, we had offered the position. He declined the position, he had just started his job search for it. And after the interview, we felt comfortable offering him the position when we called him back. He declined it, saying he wasn't ready to commit to that position, so we're back on the hunt.
Okay.
Searching for more people.
You get them when they're in front of you from now on, Justin.
We actually thought.
Well, we, we had, we had two interviews right back-to-back, they left, we called them literally an hour after he left, and he declined the position, so.
Let's keep working the issue, we have another candidate now?
Uh, no, no current candidates.
I just want to thank John Wigan, who's filling in as an interim, he's trying to help out the best he can. But he's got some limitations as far as what he, what he can't do for the office.
I did tell Donna an email this week that if John is tied up, the selectmen also have, can be backups for that position. So I told her, if you're going to go by and call me, and I'd be available for inspection.
She is on vacation next week, and she's going to have limited hours, so if we get those phone calls, I'll communicate that to my staff, and then reach out to you to schedule something.
So if somebody's got a foundation, needs to be poured or something, I can go in inspection, make sure it's good and okay.
Very good, any other discussion on that, gentlemen?
Nope.
Moving right along.
Did you want to go over the hours that it is going to be closed next week?
For the town, for the building department?
Yeah.
She'll have special hours.
Special hours are replacing, basically going to be closed.
I don't know, does it say in those dates?
No, it doesn't have the hours.
It's closed all week, isn't it?
It's closed all week because she's, she's on vacation, and you guys are going to have very limited permits to be able to be pulled next week in your office, down at the selectman's office.
Yeah, the thing is, she basically wrote, I could leave applications of a gas, actual plumbing at the front office, if those could be logged and paid and received, no one would be held up. Don't, it can be accessed, can be accepted and addressed a phone a week with no immediate action used.
And that's where, we'll lean on Dave for the.
If there's something, if something hot, yeah.
And I know, and I know she said she posted on the website as well.
Yeah, she might, I just haven't been in the office, I've been a little bit.
Okay, moving on to the next subject. Did we get, this is a copy of the request that Don, the Dunbar Town Hall Restoration Committee, we sent a letter out for them asking for some dollars to be transferred, did we get a response from them?
Look at the flag behind it.
We have a check.
We just got it today.
I like that.
I don't get in.
I read the letter, and the check's right there, that's where it should be.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the amount of, okay, very good.
I was going to say, they did approve that mini-meeting package.
Right, but the thing is, I just don't want to have, coffers don't, I don't want to have run dry.
Yeah, so as you can see from that summary sheet that you're looking at now, the numbers?
Yes.
We've already spent twenty thousand of that restoration money.
Okay.
Because the ARPA is gone, we're down with using some of the restoration, and then the rest will come from.
With tax dollars.
Taxes and surplus.
Okay.
Can I see that before you might have.
And.
Our surplus, so that's why it was.
Was this a little bit short from what we?
That's exactly the money that was on the warrant.
Just want to make sure, that's perfect. This was the month of the warrant, Dave.
Yep, that's the month I remember too, okay. I did see the email, looked higher.
It's the month of the warrant.
What's it mean when they're in the blue, that was the second payment?
The two, yeah, the two, the two blue are, I had to split the.
Payment through.
Payment to identify the total funds to what we were paying out for dispersments. So the dispersments came in over the two hundred ninety-four thousand, so then you dip into the next funding source.
I think we're doing okay.
Yeah, and I think they're way, way over what they're asking for from me, so that's good suggestion.
And I think Mr. Chacon, so far, cost of runs have been reasonable, or the change orders, reasonable.
But we've only had two, and two more things we wanted, so.
Right. When was the, for the, I think the first one was for the, so we wouldn't have a delay on equipment.
Well, we're on the library addition, Mike, I give you guys a little bit of an update on the electrical.
Okay.
The electrical engineer of record for the building gave the drawings back to Chacon's electrical contractor. And those guys are putting the final numbers together. There had to be a room, a fire ready room down in the basement for that pump.
Understood.
So Chacon's already built that room. So now Leah has the loading from the electrical engineer, and Leah works for EverSource to make sure the transformer that they sized is accurate. And we're going to go underground with the power because it has to go underground for the sprinkler pump.
Correct.
So we're going to put all of the electrical for the building under the ground, which Jeff Crosby has volunteered to date for, for, out of his own budget.
Okay.
Electrical contractor will put the conduit in, Jeff will backfill it.
Is that free, or is that billed through his budget? You said volunteer in the same.
He's doing it out of his budget, Jeff.
Out of his budget, okay.
Okay, the only question I had was, you know, we're mixing two projects together. When was a sprinkler system, which was one project, was there any money left over in the sprinkler system that could be helped pay for this, or was it just separate, completely separate?
No, the sprinkler system itself was just for the installation of the sprinkler system. The electrical portion was always on the town.
Okay.
But we just didn't know that dollar amount, we decided when they did this, if this passed, to use the same electrician.
Okay.
This electrician said he got his numbers early next week.
Right, and so the thing is, in early discussions, it said we'd have two panels?
Yeah.
And one panel, which is, which is kind of creating redundancy, I thought.
Yeah, there will still be two panels.
Okay.
So they're going to use the existing line that went to the building for the fire pump, which a fire pump should be separated if you can.
Right, okay, great.
So they're going to use that existing panel line for that, but it's going to go underground now. And then the new panel, the four hundred and fifty-amp panel for the whole building, will be installed in the basement, it's already there.
Okay, great.
And then, I don't know if you guys knew this, but as part of the building design, they put another two hundred amp up on the stage upstairs for future expansion, and that's already installed up there.
Great, 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 great.
So we have, as a town, we will get a bill from the electrical contractor to supply electric to that sprinkler pump room. And that was something we always had to pay for.
That's right, that's how we make sure, yeah, we knew that was coming.
And when I talked to the.
I don't know if it was included in part of the sprinkler system.
No, it wasn't.
Okay.
No, it wasn't.
But while I had the, while I had the electrician on the phone this week and referenced that because I've seen the stuff come through from the engineer, and I called him to make sure he knew where the room. There was some question about where we were going to locate the fire room downstairs. We were actually, it located very close to the panel, which saves on a big wire that has to be fireproof. So the shorter we can make that wire, the better off it is for the town.
Okay.
So that being said, afterwards, I talked to him about upstairs, that sheet rock ceiling on the second floor.
Right.
Has no lighting. And in the future, there was talk about maybe doing a tin ceiling up there again. So you wouldn't want to put any fancy pediment lights that have to be removed because you'd have to put boxes in the ceiling. And if the square of the. And if the square of the tin ceiling didn't match up where the light came through exactly, you'd have to rewire it all. So in talking it through with them, they make six-inch discs that go right in the sheet rock.
Okay.
That would be, um.
LED discs.
LED discs that are very reasonably priced now, and he could give us, you know, three or four or five rows, he's gonna look at it next week, and have those on dimmers. And so that would give us lighting up there, and we could dim it from front to back, or whatever you want to do.
No candles, right.
And, and that would go off that new two hundred amp.
Gotcha.
Panel, so I asked him to separate a price out for that.
Is that a sub, uh, gonna be a sub-panel of the big one?
Yes, that's a two hundred amp sub-panel, so.
Exactly.
Downstairs is four fifty now, four hundred and fifty amps, so. So in that, that's an option for us, he's gonna give us a number on it, and we can either accept it or deny it, or wait till the end of the year, while he's here, I'm thinking it's best to do it, but.
Yeah, we're gonna, he's, put things together to save dollars.
Absolutely.
So those two prices should be, mainly you can do it during our special, uh, meeting with John.
If they come next, soon, next week, or when we, from today?
Which John?
John Trotier.
Next week at six o'clock.
Okay, for electrical?
To approve the electrical, uh, the, it's gonna be a change order.
To keep the project.
Oh, oh, you want me to add it to the agenda for next week? Absolutely, yes, I will do that.
And I don't.
Other business, yeah.
I'm hoping he'll have the.
Okay.
Pricing done by then.
All right.
I'm gonna push for that, because I don't wanna stop them, because they're about to start the exterior site work here.
Yeah.
That's why it's getting all cleaned up, and they wanna have that electrical in before they do that.
Amen, okay, sounds like a plan, thank you, David.
Okay.
Any questions, Justin?
Nope.
Any questions from the public?
I mean, I guess that, that cleared out the question at the planning board meeting. That was, that was asked at the planning board meeting, that, uh, I had nothing, that you answered to?
Well, well, the thing is, I talked to a little bit.
Yeah.
And I think I reiterated, Dave, I think I reiterated exactly what you said.
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I may have not been as technical, but I, I think I had captured the essence of it.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Can I just clarify this discussion for the public? Um, we don't typically, we didn't have a meeting scheduled for next week, but John Trotier wanted to meet with the board and requested a special meeting, so they can talk to them about the election.
Right.
And while we're here, the, the meeting's gonna start early, six o'clock, and then Dave's asked me to add this electrical discussion to that same meeting.
So Bobby, you're welcome to come if you wanted to.
Yeah, if Leo's not here, which he might or might not be.
But it will be a six o'clock start instead of seven.
Yeah, if he isn't, I would be here.
John.
I, I made that assumption when you were talking about John Trotier.
Yeah, okay.
I figured it had to do with the primaries.
John couldn't make this meeting, and he always wants to give us a heads up on the election, so.
Okay. That closes the mailbox, so Bobby, you have a public comment open to you.
Well, I'll say one thing, with the joint loss committee and the Department of Labor, you demonstrate to them, because they read, they probably read some of the minutes of the meeting, that we do try to address job injuries when they happen. And that's one of the things they highlight.